Roll call, please. Dr. Powers?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Wise? Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mrs. Killian?
Here.
Mrs. Lor?
Here.
Ms. Lauer?
President.
Thank you. Now if you would join in the pledge, please, and follow by moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our vision and mission statement, working together with our community, we inspire our students to discover their talents and rise to their greatest potential. Our mission is building on the strength of our diverse community. We create an engaging, comprehensive educational environment that supports the growth of lifelong learners. Before we start tonight, I would like to say that I have had some comments from people listening or watching us online that says they have trouble hearing what we're saying. So please, I know we are all masked, which is a little detriment, but please speak clearly, distinctly, and into the microphone so that everybody of our listening audience can hear us, okay? Thank you. And Dr. Tom Balatovich and Dr. Megan Kirk are with us, and they're going to talk about the Stop It app presentation.
Thank you, President Lauer, Superintendent Hayward, and members of the school board of trustees. At the last board meeting that we had, we were asked during our presentation about the return to school, about students' mental health and students' social, emotional well-being. And so I said then, that evening, that I would be more than happy to come back with a presentation for you to discuss that. And so we are going to discuss the Stop It app, but there will be a little bit more to the presentation in order to tee that up a little bit better. So with me tonight is Dr. Megan Kirk, and I'm going to turn it over to her, and then we'll entertain any questions at the end of her presentation.
Thank you, good evening. Yeah, so I'm going to kind of highlight a little bit about what student mental health looks like in our school corporation, and then kind of explain a little bit about the support that we're going to put in place. So we measure student mental health a few different ways. So we're going to go through each of these, and I'll highlight what we're seeing in our schools so far this school year. One thing I do want to highlight are what we call ACEs. These are Adverse Childhood Experiences, and they're related to childhood trauma. This goes back to a study from the 90s that highlights adverse childhood experiences that adults have had. And so those 10 topics that kind of fall in here, a lot of them, physical, emotional, sexual abuse and neglect, incarcerated parents, death or abandonment in the home, drug use in the home, mental health of family, and those things of that nature. So just want to highlight some data that was pulled from Indiana Youth Institute. They put out a data book every year, and so some of this data was pulled about Vigo County. We're looking at the blue lines are Vigo County, and the orange ones highlight the state of Indiana. So you can see just at a glance that our Vigo County statistics are above the state average in all of these areas. We're sitting at about 40% of single-parent families. Our children in poverty is just above the 20% mark. Our food insecure children, we're looking at about 1 in 5. And then children that are removed from the home due to parental drug and/or alcohol abuse is almost 80%. One of the statistics that I found really alarming this year in our data book is that the Indiana average rate for child abuse neglect is 18.4 per 1,000 children. In Vigo County, we're at 47 per 1,000 children. Huge number, and these are substantiated cases. So these are not just reports, these are substantiated cases. So in our school corporation, myself and our coordinator of safety and security, we review all of the alleged child abuse and neglect reports that are made by Vigo County school staff. So here's just a quick highlight of the numbers that we've gotten. And Mark should actually be 30, but I got another report on the way here. So we're sitting at almost 650 reports for this school year so far. Handle with Care is an initiative that we started last February where we partner with local law enforcement to report to us if they go to a hall and there's a child present that has been exposed to a potentially traumatic situation. We don't assume that it's criminal, we don't assume it's violent. We just know that there is some exposure to trauma kind of defined as though that adverse childhood experience I mentioned earlier. So it's up to the discretion of the law enforcement officer to report that to us. And I will say, this is solely data from one agency here in Vigo County, and we hope to expand this program so we have a better picture of what's going on with our youth. Another component of mental health in our schools is our school-based crisis assessment. So these are students that are referred to their school counselor for having thoughts of self-harm or suicidal ideation. So what we're seeing this year, we're still seeing those thoughts of self-harming behaviors. We're seeing thoughts of suicide. But what we're seeing a huge increase in is the suicide attempts. Right now, I'm seeing almost on a weekly basis, I learn at least one failed attempt by one of our students. This is a huge crisis for us, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. Right now, we're sitting in 101 school-based referrals so far this year. And this doesn't touch any referrals that happen outside of our school. So that's data that I don't have, but here's what we have. So the outcomes when we refer a student to be further assessed, they usually will come back to school with a safety plan. They may be recommended for therapy, or they may be hospitalized for some acute stabilization needs. I have reached out to our local psychiatric hospital for children and adolescents to get some numbers so I could get a better understanding of what's happening with our youth in our county. So so far, as of the end of February, there have been 131 hospitalizations for Vigo County youth. These are the only school corporation in this county, minus some non-public schools. I would guess that most of those are our kids. So just some statistics there to show again what mental health is looking like.
Abuse, 118?
Yes, yep, up to age 18. At the beginning of the year, when we were bringing kids back on an AV schedule, we put out a survey to them, asking them to write two things. What was your school experience like before COVID? And then what was your stay-at-home experience like? And I intersected those two answers to determine a risk level for these students. And so this is just a quick snapshot of the risk level you can see across elementary, middle, and high school. So our middle school students identified as our largest group at risk. We also complete a social-emotional learning questionnaire with students twice a year. So in the fall, we completed it, and they answered questions on these seven areas. I highlighted two because these are the ones that are greatest focus for me. Emotion regulation, students understanding how to regulate their emotions, especially now, being able to identify those emotions so that we can teach them how to cope with those feelings. But also the sense of belonging and understanding how our students feel connected to their school community. And you can see the drop from our elementary to our secondary students. So this is something that we're tackling with some different ideas and looking at ways that we can't bring that number up from 45. So we know the structure is different. We're also trying to create more opportunities for our staff to connect with students so that they feel like a valued member of their school community. Just another table to kind of highlight the risk level, kind of there in the middle. About 46% of our middle school students have identified some level of risk, and 60% of our high school students are identifying with some level of risk in regards to their social, emotional well-being. So those are some ways that we're measuring student mental health in Vigo County and the school corporation. These are just some of our opportunities that we have provided to work on the prevention of further issues. I highlighted four that we're actively working on right now. Hope Squad and Room Change to Mind Clubs. Hope Squad is an opportunity to incorporate some peer-to-peer suicide prevention tactics. And then Room Change to Mind is a high school club focused on breaking that stigma around mental health to allow students to be able to talk about it more openly and to normalize the terminology and the language around mental health. We'll come back to the Stop It app, but we're also generating some resources for parents and staff to help with addressing these student mental health issues. So I want to talk a little bit about the Stop It app. The Stop It app is a mobile app that allows for students to report bullying and crisis situations. But what is better with that is that there's an opportunity to report it anonymously. So if someone, if I go to Sally and talk to her and tell her I'm feeling like I'm going to hurt myself, Sally can report that through the app anonymously and still get me help. She doesn't have to disclose who she is. If there's a bullying situation, I can report that anonymously as well. So it allows for students to submit me photo or video evidence. It allows during the school day to have a live conversation through the Messenger feature of the app. And then it just gives a way for peers to help one another. As far as the staff side, again, it gives them the real-time alert. It allows them to follow up with those that are submitting information. They'll be able to notify, get notified in patterns of problems with some of the alerts that they'll be getting through the system. And everything will be time and date stamped for easier investigations that come with these situations. Another wonderful feature of it is that there's a 24/7 incident management center with it. So outside of the school day, this app will be monitored by trained operators year-round. So even in the summertime, if we're on a break, it'll be manned by trained operators. And so if someone were to make a report, myself or Dr. Balatovich would be notified that for some reason we weren't available to address the concern, then the call will go to Vigo County Dispatch, and they will be able to alert local law enforcement to complete a well-child check on that individual. So the timely response of these incidents are within five minutes, it says, most of the time, but definitely within an hour. And again, it's got this integration piece with law enforcement. Another nice feature of this app is it has a built-in SELC, or Social Emotional Learning Center, that will give us an opportunity to expand on some character development, some behavioral intervention resources for students at the elementary and secondary level. Some of the topics I've listed include bullying and harassment, depression and anxiety, substance abuse, mental health, and diversity. And so I mentioned, again, some peer support opportunities with Hope Squad. It's partnered with the QPR Institute. So students would learn Question Persuade Refer, which is a method for suicide intervention prevention. Students are nominated by their classmates as being trustworthy peers, and then they're trained by advisors. So there's a nice education training and peer intervention piece with that. Room Change to Mind is a student-led opportunity where teens will have a platform to share their voice and raise awareness. We really want to promote some peer-to-peer opportunities because we know that that's where they're going to go when they're struggling. They will come to adults, but they're more apt to go to their peers. So we want to create some avenues for them to do that. We created two resources. They're open over this one. So I can show. The first one for staff members. We created this Google Doc for staff members of how to support student mental health in the classroom. So I highlighted a lot of those statistics you saw. We've asked them to dedicate some time, maybe during advisory, to just talk with the kids, open up a space for kids to be able to talk as they come back. We have AV kids that haven't been together, so we want them to be able to get to know one another and, again, make those peer connections for the last quarter of this school year. So there's some signs and symptoms about suicide so that they can understand what to look for when students come back, what conversations to listen to, and what to do. Directing them back to the school counselors so that they can intervene if necessary. So this is just one of our resources that we've put out there for staff. And then we also created a mental health resource for parents in the community. So if they're feeling like they need help for their child, we kind of have the emergency site on the left with crisis interventions, hotlines, and what to do. On the right-hand side is more of our non-emergency. If you're still concerned, but it's not an emergency, get in touch with the school counselor, and we'll take care of connecting students to resources, so.
So at this time, does anybody have any questions for us or comments?
I have a question back on the adverse child experience data. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. So when you have 80% children moving home, that's not 80% of all Vigo County students have been removed from their home at one time either?
No, the kids that aren't removed.
Yes.
80% of them are because of drug or alcohol abuse. Sorry if I didn't say that clearly. Yes, no.
I was just wondering, so this is for the kids to use primarily, right?
There is a feature for parents to be able to use the app as well.
So is that the focus, for the parents to use it or for the student body?
We will train students first, as well as the staff, but it will be promoted as a resource for parents as well to be able to share, especially for our younger children, so to have an avenue to share with their school. You know, if your son or daughter comes home and shares with you and they're not comfortable talking, then the parent can use that app to communicate with someone at the school as well.
Is that something that other people in the community can access? So like, even though I'm not a, you know, a teacher or something, if I encountered a student and they shared something with me, like at church or something, would other people be able to access that?
I'll have to look at how the access works, because there are codes per school building. But that's definitely something I'll look into a little bit more. I'm not sure how broad it goes into the community, and I know definitely, yeah. So with that in mind, that's a good idea, I think.
That's very interesting.
Yeah.
Is this a national program or a state?
Yeah, it is. And there are some other districts in Indiana that have this app already.
Do you have a validity percentage? Because I would think that there would be many referrals that may not be accurate.
I think that is true with the Bully Box too that we have, still have in our schools today. Especially when we first put the Bully Box out, you could see a lot of different types of notes and messages that come in there. Some of them are very valid, and like you say, Mrs. Lauer, some of them not so much. But you have to check everyone out and make sure.
And the Incident Management Center, where is that based?
That's something we'll have to get back to you on. I'm not really sure, but the good thing about that is, at the end of the school day, they take over and they monitor that system and like Dr. Kirk said, through the summer too.
And what's our cost?
So for three years, the cost of the program is $49,560.
For three years?
Mm-hmm.
Do you pay for it in three-year chunks? Do you pay for it every year?
It's cheaper to buy it in a three-year package than it is to buy it every single year, so. And again, this is something that school corporations are moving toward. If they have moved toward it already. We've been looking at this for a few years, and actually, the state of Indiana may end up purchasing this for every school corporation in the state. And if that happens, we've already looked into that to see if we could get a refund. Apparently, that's yes.
Well, that's one of the things.
Yep.
Do you happen to know where Indiana ranks for child abuse out of our 56? I know at one time, one of the counties in the Wabash Valley was the leading county to die in over 45 years old. So I think we're probably four.
Child abuse, I believe, 48, 49 out of 56. We're at the bottom. We're pretty low. I don't remember these. We covered, I think, 47, 48 in the last couple of years.
One more quick question. On your previous slide from this, when you had, you noticed the difference between the elementary and the high school. Can you go back to that?
Yeah. Sense of belonging.
Right here. Right. I'm seeing the difference between the second, the emotion regulation, and the self-management, which is managing their emotions.
Right, so.
So what's the difference in that question?
So self-management is going to be heavily some of their stress and just kind of being able to initiate tasks and things, being able to ignore situations, maintain calm.
Just seem like they were so similar.
And so emotion regulation, it's similar. I guess emotion regulation is just one component of self-management. In self-management, we're talking about both the behaviors too. Emotion regulation is really about the feeling process. And so kind of controlling your anger, the calm, and the stress. Self-management is more, there's kind of the organizational piece with the thoughts and the behaviors and keeping it together whereas the emotions are just one piece of that. It actually needs to report pretty strongly there. Which speaks well to our schools, as well as the social awareness where they are empathetic with others. I think that's a strong piece of our students. I think with emotion regulation too, some of that is just having the vocabulary to express themselves. And so that's something, again, that we're kind of working on is introducing that with some of our social, emotional curriculum.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Megan.
Now, if I could ask Dr. Kristy Fenton to bring us up on the school consolidation update.
I think our volume's been pretty good. Good, okay.
Good.
Sorry for the delay. I'm to come this evening, Chris Lauer, Superintendent Hayward, and members of the school board of trustees, to kind of give you an update as to where we are in regards to our school consolidation. Earlier this winter, we voted to repurpose two of our elementary schools. And once that started, we got moving on how we can help our boys and girls. We kind of set together a timeline. The two schools that were going to be repurposed, along with the schools in which they were going to be going to have the students move into. As you can see, the things that are listed in red are things that we've already accomplished on that timeline. This is a living document, so as things come up, we add to it, we take things off, and are adjusting it to that timeline. So we've had Mrs. Raymore from Wabash, Mrs. Franklin Franklin, Mrs. Teneus at Demme have been working together very closely as they transitioned the Demme students to those two buildings. And also Mrs. Stages at West Vigo, Dr. Benomo at Thea, and Dr. Marson should have consolidated. Once we all got together and kind of talked about timelines, then they initiated a group at each one of their buildings to help transition as well. So that was kind of a timeline that was set up. We then looked at how are we going to transition our staff members. On February 17th, Mr. Cox and I met with all teachers that are at the schools that are being repurposed so that they can make a selection for their new school. It was every school opening that we had was listed, and we went by seniority. They were able to go through that list and then select a school. We had a live document going that was kind of funny because we could see as people were dropping on and watching to see what happened as the return came up, they kind of were able to get on right away, make some decisions. At that time, we placed every teacher except for three. Those three had decided that they would like to wait till March 17th, which is the next rollout of any positions that we have open, and they'll make their selection at that time. We also have already placed secretaries, custodians, EA. So everybody really knows where they're going. And because that has been determined, some of the stress is already kind of coming out of the room where they're able to start planning for their future and looking at what their next year's going to be. The principals and the new sites have already reached out to those staff members. They've given them tours of the building. They've had visits, they've met staff members. They're planning some social events for them to get to know each other and really start feeling part of that new school community. PTO presidents have reached out to those staff members as well. They've got them on their staff email list so that they're familiar with what's going on in those buildings. And we're trying to make them feel as comfortable as possible as they move to their new sites. Another thing that's probably pressing on them is, you know, how do I get all my stuff out of here? And so that's why we're working very closely with Mr. Long and the Facilities Department so that we can get their personal belongings moved for them. We've even talked a little bit about things that they're not using now and will not be using the rest of the school year. They get to box it up, put the school name on it, and we'll take it for them now so that other way, and they can feel like they're at least getting something they can check off the box and feel comfortable with. So looking very closely with those teachers that are transitioning. The next thing is looking at the student transitions and how we're looking to make sure that our boys and girls feel welcome at their new sites. Each family should have received a letter already welcoming them to their new school site. The principals have visited Demme and West Vigo Elementary to introduce themselves. They made videos of welcome for their schools. A couple of them have already had an open house to invite the parents in so that they can come and see the building, find their way around. One of them had a scavenger hut, so when they came in, they had to find something in the library so they could find their way around the building or find something in the cafeteria. So they worked very, very hard to make the children feel like they're welcome in their new homes. They've been given a swag, so they're getting t-shirts for their new homes. But in the same sense, the schools that will be repurposed, they're also trying to make sure that that's celebrated as well. And so there'll be a lot of activities in those buildings to celebrate those schools. So a lot of things that are kind of going on. We've got some head pals happening, but it's kind of an ongoing process. We work closely together, but each school has their own personality and has worked very. So as the principals have been working through this, they've been feeding information to Mr. Riley, who puts his magical touch on things, and has set up on the webpage, if you go to schools and scroll down to the bottom, you see the transitioning tab there. And then he's kind of filled information so that if a parent just asks that question, "Why are we closing buildings?", that information's there along with the resources that we had and the strategic plan that was in place as we're moving forward, so that information is there as well. Just kind of facts and things. And there's also contact information, so if they want to contact the new principal or contact the older principal, they can get a little better. They can contact me as well, just ask questions about how this is going to transition. There's the boundary maps, that you just click into one of those and be able to see where the new boundary lines are in case you're not sure where your hole is in comparison to that new line. But again, the principals have reached out to those families to invite them to the new buildings. Here's some open houses that have taken place. We've already had one at Wild Bash in Franklin. And then we've got some in the Works for Sugar Creek Consolidated, yeah. And then I'll show you a few minutes of some videos that the schools put on in regards to kind of try to make them feel welcome. This is Starla. Starla is the Demme mascot. She's taken a visit to Wild Bash School. Each video is about a few minutes long and introduces some of the staff members, welcomes boys and girls and families to the school. Show the next one maybe, Sugar Creek Consolidated. What does recognize faces in places in the videos would be helpful. Actually showing us the buildings and behalf of the YP will be, so not just on the website, the boys and girls should be given some videos in their school. And then we will have field trips for boys and girls to come visit their brand-new buildings so that they can again be and be familiar with everything. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there travel times for some of the teachers that are being transitioned? I mean, you know, did they have to travel from class to classroom, classroom to classroom where they didn't before?
No, we made sure that we had the capacity of the new facilities for classrooms.
Good.
That was important to us. The other part that was kind of nice, not only on March seventeenth were we able to place those teachers, we, prior to that, we could look at the art music schedules and adjust those so that those were set even before March seventh. And that went very smoothly.
I appreciate the creativity of all the school leaders that are involved in this.
Along with their staff.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fenton.
And we're happy to have suggestions too, if you have good ideas. Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. Cox, if you want to go ahead and set up, mine's not going to take very long. At our next board meeting, at our next board meeting, we will be bringing a policy to you that we would like to amend. And that policy refers to a grade of C minus or worse. Have the opportunity to retake that. In the age of COVID, we would just like to give students the opportunity, if they did not like the grade that they received, the opportunity to retake a course. We're working with our teachers association to figure out what that looks like. Hopefully in two weeks, we will come to you with a policy that is looking at amending that probably for one year, as we think about COVID. And a student would get to choose the better of the two grades. That would go on the official transcript. So that will be coming in two weeks.
Will that have a transcript notation that the policy is different during that time period?
We have not gotten there, Dr. Powers. Do you have a suggestion there?
No, just that there be a transcript notation so that, so that makes sense to any outsider who are looking at that.
Got it. Thank you.
Mike, looks like Mr. Michael Cox is up for the presentation.
President Bower, meeting the board. Appreciate you taking the opportunity to let us sit in front of you and tell us a little bit about those on the human resource office, daily, weekly, monthly, yearly. Kind of outlined a few items here, and hopefully any slides show work well. Just to make sure that the leader puts it off the side here. On our first slide here, we have just pictures of people that's within our office that we have our names with. And in the small slides behind it are job descriptions. There's not enough pages here that's available for us to add what each of these individuals do. But Carol Taylor, Suzanne Stewart, we have an open position right now that we are interviewing for, that would be an admin current job in the lead specialist, I'll talk to you about that. Ms. Cindy Dersch, benefits assistant, Ms. Wallace, Ms. Warren, Ms. Corr, our admin clerical. I have Ms. Harris sitting next to me, who's our benefits manager as well. So on our next slide, in very small, fine print, we tried to put everything that they do. It doesn't do them justice because you surround yourself with great people and the people within this HR department work hard every day to answer questions. There are some times when we have time off, which is very rare, snow days, people call with questions because it's an opportunity for them to ask questions. During the summer, we're hiring for the next school year, which we'll talk a little bit about that process as well. And then during the school year, we have lots of other things going on during the term of the lease this year. Hopefully it'll be the last year I have to talk about COVID. Leaves, that's my goal, everybody goes out to get shots, I'll get that little sprinkle there, not a slide presentation. But on this particular slide going down, it's kind of a flow chart that we have, and it is, again, in small print, I'm sorry for the people in the back row, trying to outline a few items of what each person does for us. With Ms. Harris, she's, we'll be talking here in just a little bit about benefits manager, and I'll leave that to her later on, kind of identify underneath her, Ms. Cindy Dersch is our benefits assistant, who talks really about life-changing events for us, does those types of things and helping our employees navigate through those rough waters. And any day-to-day questions and operation that Ms. Harris may not be here. And what we try to do within our group is cross train. If somebody is missing, our employees still demand or are required the best treatment possible. So just because one person's gone, we need to make sure that we can answer those questions for our employees. So even though there are job descriptions under each individual, these people within this department do a very good job of answering questions or saying goodbye with me and then getting that answer for them and finding their... Ms. Warren, Ms. Wallace, benefits admin clerical, and they do processing and billing processes for our retirees. On the far right-hand side, Carol Taylor, I haven't pronounced her name very frequently, I call her Polar. Taylor. I don't know if you'll be specific. She does a lot of different things, really talking about personnel reports and our file job description of our contracts. Contracts are something that we are constantly working with, and if there is an opportunity for a change, it affects the contract. If somebody leaves, it affects the day, it affects pay. She's constantly adjusting those particular types of contracts. And if for some reason she may be gone that day, again, we still need to make that process happen. And Ms. Stewart is in the process right now of being cross trained for that. Underneath, Ms. Taylor is Ms. Stewart. She does provide, developed a board pack, a new hiree, and we'll talk a little bit about that orientation, safe school training, I also want to touch on that just a little bit as we go through. And then custodial, sub-custodial staff issues and so forth, we deal with those. And in our open position, which we've identified as lees, lees is a little bigger, small word for a really big job. And there have been a significant number of lees this year, I need to tell you that. You've seen them go through the board, not only for paternity and maternity, but now people are starting to schedule surgeries that are not even going to take place. And then we still are having COVID lees, and we're still tracking those types of things. On a live document, that is able to see now on our side, the benefits side. And I know we have two different legs for our flow chart, but ultimately, our group still works together, and we have issues, we come together and discuss them. Next slide is just kind of an overview, not only daily, but mainly yearly items that we take place, but we talk a little bit about the number of employees, twenty-one forty-four. That is a snapshot in time. I'm sure that number has changed just a little bit, but right now, when you put that to take your data points, twenty-one forty-four. These individuals that will on those pages take care of each individual needs. We have applications, new employee paperwork that we're required to take advantage of, and complete background checks, recommendation forms, and talk a little bit about some of these in other slides, and I'll identify those here in just a second. Staff recruiting, we have that on the slide that's coming up, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that. Recommending hires, where we have in the past relied on paper form, and we're moving to the computer, modern technology, and trying to streamline that with Google Docs, where we're able to do those types of things fairly easy, and that's been a blessing. Bargaining contracts and handbooks. I did not bring my giant handbook with me today that I spend lots of time on there, but there are fifteen contracts, and it's sitting really close to my desk at all times. Administering employee certificates, state reports, talk a little bit about some state reports that we are charged of each year, and they're associated with the DOE. The DOE requires us to keep track of certified employees, certified positions, course completions, and basically that comes down to funding. And what we have learned is the A's for hundreds of Skywoods sometimes, as long as we want to talk to one another. That's a good thing to know, because that's been able to allow us to go out and find some of our employees that have been dislaid over periods of time. And so as we've been able to start pulling those reports, we now have the teachers matched up with correct classes, and the ST numbers, and the certified employees, all matched up correctly with those classes in the Skywood. So again, changing, sometimes painful, but also is beneficial to us in being able to make sure that when you run reports, those reports are correct. And that comes down to dollars. Mr. Dave Nasser is in charge of the Skywood, and he comes in, I know it's time for reports, when he walks through the door, that's when we start working, because those are usually doing a month or two, we'll talk a little bit about those. Sometimes some of those are twice a year, some of them are one time, three years. And then, any questions there before he goes on?
Is that twenty-one forty-four total staff, all positions?
Yes.
And has it, is there, how does it compare to like last year or the year before, just off the top of your head, I'm not really that specific, but...
Influentially, so if you go to this particular slide here, that breaks down throughout the whole group, admin clerical. But if you look at our teachers, a thousand forty-three, teachers, next, custodial maintenance one fifty-four, educational assistance three seventeen, I will tell you, as we got ready to start this school year, we've had retirees that left us, so that's reduced. Educational assistance, that number is probably lower than what it had in the back. So right now, our numbers are probably smaller.
Thank you.
She might pull it up, I don't know if it's close to the stage.
This better?
Yes.
Group in the back, you hear? Okay, thank you, sorry. So within this, just a little bit of information, we talked a little bit about hiring process, I'm sorry I jumped around just a little bit, but to talk just about new staff, and this is just teachers. And this is the data that we keep track of throughout each year. The total at the bottom, twenty-one thirty elementary, and in the secondary, it's been one hot, so that gives us forty-three. That is individuals through retirements and resignations, making, maybe a little year, different job, president of the jury, something to that effect. But that gives us what we have to replace about every year.
Is that the number of openings or the number of new staff?
That's the number of new teachers that we hired this year.
So you might have more openings than that.
We have right now, later slide, we have thirty long-term subs right now, but most of those long-term subs are in special ed. And some of them have been with us two years. Just to have a little again, kind of breakdown of our employee numbers, and at the bottom is SPOs, you might have ninety SPOs a day working for us, that is eight-hour individuals and then part-time individuals filling in half-day year, half-day there, so that's nine total going around right now.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yep.
Do you think you have some long-term subs that have been subbing long-term for two years?
Special education.
Why would, what's, why?
No working on their license. Some of them are actually going back to pre-qualify. We actually had this year, one that has completed that and was able to hire them full contract.
Thank you. Is that the area where we need people the most?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
Unfortunately nationwide, so...
Yeah, I have another slide here, just a little bit, talk a little bit about some of what we're working on, this other column. Employee unit evaluation, talk a little bit about this, each individual, kind of the hire, all employees, we will have a kind of an initial meeting, orientation, not only beginning the school year for teachers, but also for our new employees throughout the year. Within that, we talk about school operations procedures, safety, security, within the schools, aerial procedures that we have favorable through, evaluations, and like I said, when I was again, over time, ECS reports with our mandatory, and reports of quarters. And then professionalism, mostly talking about social media. So you hit that every employee. It's like being in a classroom, yes, it's a little nice. Two things at once. Employee relations, talking a little bit about the handbooks, do not bring those with me today, I don't think, I'd like to sit down and read through those, but we do maintain fifteen of those each and every year. Each of those have a representative that I meet with, the three that we continue to meet with, teachers, custodial maintenance, and secretaries each year as bargaining begins. But since the state has provided a deadline for us, which is between September fifteenth and November fifteenth, that's caused us to have to meet with the other employee groups later. It's not that I didn't want to meet with them, it is the fact... It is the fact that state has handcuffed us, but normally, when we start school, we start school with a contract. I can't start official bargaining until September fifteenth. So that creates a whole good problem with meeting the other groups. And once we have completed that, which by November fifteenth, I do have to complete bargaining, or goes again fast, and that's for our Indiana Educational Relations Board, which causes us to spend time with mediator, which we do not want to do. We have a really good relationship with the Teachers Association, sitting down and talking to them. And we will start informal bargaining here in May, I believe. And then we will go through the summer to get some things hashed out. But then we come in front of you, September fifteenth, and say we are going to start formal bargaining, start meeting, and then we bring you that contract or ratification. The ours took guideline, not that we're not wanting to meet with everybody, but we have to meet with teachers first, and then work our way down. After November fifteenth, we do meet with each of our employee groups, educational systems. We meet with the SPOs, we meet with, versus each individual group we meet with, and decide on a kind of concerns they have, issues they have, items they'd like to see. Negotiations, and we bring that back to Dr. Hill with the board. Contract issues and discrepancies, we deal with that. Education, E D E B is extra, they have extra duty chart, and that is within the. Questions on that slide? Staff evaluations is something that was one of our strategic goals that we created last year, and then COVID hit, and the evaluation was more complicated. I didn't have staff in the building, but we do have evaluations that are there for each employee group. And then by the end of the year, we will have all of the employee groups with evaluations. Teachers are up there, there's the reporter, which hired to do. Our teacher evaluations are annual. First and second year teachers are evaluated three times. And our three-year old, our three-year teachers above are evaluated two. So that's either sixty minutes, it's two evaluations, ninety minutes if it's three. There is a rubric that at the end of that particular evaluation is marked and provided back to the teacher for feedback.
What clarification, you mean they're being observed, but they're only evaluated one time, right?
Yep.
And that can be by the principal, the assistant principal, or any other designated.
Final labor evaluations, we give back and we submit, I submit a teacher appreciation grant, TAD grant, that is for any individuals that have effective or highly effective evaluations, and that would be completed by this, that kind of. Again, every employee group level, and educational systems, custodians, maintenance, managers, technical group will all have evaluation within the full technical. Staff recruitment. Staff recruitment this year, again, somewhat difficult, because a lot of the job fairs that they are having are virtual. Again, came out of wait till COVID is over, so we can actually visit schools. But what we have in the past created opportunities for interviews, we did those in June and July. And you know, in the past, we moved those up, as everybody in the state has, because there are shortages of educators in Indiana. So we now look at March and May. We did attend a virtual job fair through a group called CCC. And that is the, I have glasses today. College career, thank you. Career Center. And that is going to be Marion University, Hanover, Anderson, Butler, that particular group. And what happens is we put out what we are looking for. Special education could be foreign language, physics, just in case, because of the seven five times. And then they send us the resume, we set up a virtual interview. And we've had three individuals right now within special ed deal with this reach out. So it's a start, it's not break. The other item that we have, and down to technology and people that know me, our technology is old-fashioned. I like looking at people, I like being in front of them, talking with a piece of paper. But the handshake program that we have identified, and what we looked at is putting out a job description. Our job descriptions, we're still a work in progress. I think that was the slide two that skipped over. To make sure that we have a clear, defined job description on each of our jobs, instead of just teacher, or custodial, or educational system. Identify what they're doing. But in this particular one, we have special education. We were able to upload this to this program and send it out, send it out directly to these schools, because they are the ones that reply to me as quickly as possible, and it was a positive. Some of them I've sent out and still not received acknowledgement of an email. The individuals that we kind of targeted, Tennessee State University, Kentucky State University, Central State, Harris-Stoll State, and University of Louisville. Tennessee State down by Nashville. Kentucky State is in Frankfurt, visited because I just went down to visit my daughter. She doesn't go there. Central State is in Ohio, over around Columbus. And Harris-Stoll State University is in St. Louis. So we are sending out our particular job description for special education to those individuals. And they have not had virtual job fairs yet. They're in end of March, in first of April. So that's the one we are targeting for students. We also have a very good relationship with ISU. And we've had quite a few individuals doing student teaching. We have hired a lot of those individuals from ISU, because they're already in our school working with us. And last year, our last fall, we had twenty-one students. This spring, we had sixty-seven ISU students already in our building. So we do chief the system and are able to look at, our principals are able to see how they're doing, pick up our students. I hope that that doesn't go on the news, so it gets out to our group, because we'll leave that. But yes, we are trying to steal students as quick as possible.
That's incredible increase, isn't it, at ISU for the students?
No, it's a semester-by-semester issue. So it's, we always have more in the spring than the fall. Depends on where they are on the cycle. Do we have a recruitment video that we share or anything?
What I did is a brochure that we had, it needs updating. That's what we started with, and I needed more with Mr. O'Reilly to start recruiting.
That's a good project, St. Cecilia.
Yep. Mr. O'Reilly also, now he's done my PowerPoint presentation. He was in, I believe, some sort of dark color. Mrs. Harris did not like it, so. Thank both of them for their advice. I think it's colorful now. Most of the colors I see is from the lights. Questions on that slide, any other questions before we move on? Next, Kelly Services. And in Kelly Services, I wanted to bring in this one, our attention, because this is our group that manages our sub pool. And I have a couple of slides here in just a second to kind of go through, to identify just some numbers for us to look at. Within this slide deck, we talk a little bit about the requirements, and we draw up the college credit scale from thirty to twenty-four. Try to increase our sub pool. Right now, there's two-hundred-and-thirty-three individuals within our sub pool that we can draw from. That number is a luminous lead because of this. We have thirty long-term subs. So if you take that, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-three, so that's two oh three. Then add to that floating subs. Floating subs are our way to try to curb being able to allow teachers to leave, because if you get sick, you don't want you at school at that point in time. Then you're short staff. So what we have gone out and asked Kelly Services to do is provide us some subs that we keep at the building. And within our elementary, middle, and high school, we have twenty-three floating subs. So take that out of the sub pool, now you're down to about one-hundred-and-eighty subs for our school. Right now, I had them give us their fill rate. I know their fill rate in the past has been up over ninety percent. It is seventy-nine percent. Seventy-nine point one seven. If you take out December's fill rate, because it was a short timeframe, it would be seventy-five. This particular data chart, I had them pull August to January. August to January pre-COVID. And on the right-hand side is August to January for the 2021 school year. Outlining total number of absences for each part of the month. Then the fill rate and the end fill rate. On the left-hand side shows you, obviously, they're close to ninety percent fill rate. On the right-hand side, it's sporadic.
What happens when you have an unfilled absence in a school building?
We ask teachers to cover, if they'd like to do that, cover that, or an educational system, or combined classes in some cases. If we go to the bottom here, here the fill rate, had them put those together so we can identify where they're at for us through these several months. If you look at October, October, we were struggling filling positions. And that was also when COVID, we were having issues. So that's kind of an overview of that. I want to make sure that you had that information in front of you.
And when we first joined services with Kelly, our initial contract, they had an obligation for a fill rate gap, how?
They said it was around ninety percent. Their goal is ninety percent. There's nothing in there that's, it's just any information I asked that from Ben at Kelly in Chicago, and then his boss. They had the information going back to Mr. Orr.
When did we hire them?
Mr. Orr was here, Mr. Orr was here. So twenty twelve, twenty twelve, twenty eleven, twenty twelve. Don't quote me.
I can't remember the exact date either.
I have a question. If you were saying that sometimes if you can't get a sub, they will combine two classes. How often does something like that happen?
Elementary is probably more frequent than any other classes.
So is that part of the teacher's assignment, that they would have to go?
They can say no.
They can say no. So that sometimes maybe, especially in the era of social distancing, we wouldn't want to be combining classes. So does a teacher then go from one room to another room, so that they're supervising at least at some point both classrooms?
Yes.
Okay. And they just are doing that, being gracious?
And we'll be paid for that.
What happens in all school levels? If somebody gets sick, like in the middle or high school too, another teacher will step in over their planning period, or step in and combine. They just do it out of the need, obviously, to supervise the students and just take care of the colleague.
But there is additional compensation, correct?
There is.
Okay. I thought you said that, but.
No, there is, sorry.
That's how I remembered.
I misunderstood you. I guess with the mask, I actually thought she said there was not compensation.
There is.
There is.
That's why it has curriculum, right?
Correct. So that's where we're at. Yes, that is correct.
Good clarification.
Clarification thing.
I've got one more question on the Kelly stuff. Would you just kind of talk through, like, if we didn't use Kelly Services, what would the burden look like? And what would you just sort of estimate to be kind of the?
I can't give you a dollar figure, I can get you one with.
No, you don't have to give me.
What you would need is about four more people.
Okay.
And those individuals need to be available twenty-four hours a day. And I believe Kelly uses a frontline service sub program, which is really nice, because you can log on and you can see Michael Cox left on March eighth. What we ran into in the past, and again, I was not in this position, but tracking leaves, because I left in the middle of the day, and somebody stepped in and helped fill that out. We had issues in that case, and so payroll had to chase that down through each individual principal. You would have to have a recruiter to go out and find people. You would need to make sure that the background checks and all the credentials are up to our requirements of twenty-four. So really, it's kind of a miniature HR department.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
But I can give you later.
I would certainly be curious about it, but I mean, that's not it. I was just looking for what, how much work we would be taking on ourselves, and that sounds like a lot, so.
It would be very difficult.
It was a lot.
So would they do, they do background checks on their people?
They use Safe School just like we do.
Yes. So we do not double-check any of that. We take them.
Or they would jump in and all on them to something. They're taking liability, but they use Safe School just the same as we do. And that's a pretty thorough background check. Excellent. We have employee benefits. Mrs. Harris is here to discuss that, because I'm kind of a liaison between our employees and benefits. But Mrs. Harris is in my office, so it's really one office in the center.
Good evening. We currently administer and manage benefits for approximately seventeen hundred of our employees. They are eligible for one form of benefit or another. This year, pardon me, this was the first year we implemented our employee benefits, self-enrollment module. This is the very first year we started that in October. It ran through mid-November. This allowed our employees to elect their benefits for the 2021 year safely and securely from their home or at their schools. All calls were done. All meetings were handled either on the phone or online. This is different from traditional face-to-face meetings that we had, where we would bring them outside vendors into our school. It went very well. We currently offer, for those employees who are eligible, Anthem Insurance with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have Health Resources Incorporated Dental, Anthem Blue View Vision, One America Life Insurance, and Long-Term Disability, employee elective such as AFLAC. We maintain clause sheets in our office that reflect the board chair. We enjoy showing our employees. We enjoy showing our employees some of those hidden salaries that they may not be aware of. So we are sure to remind our employees at every meeting to make sure they take time and thank you, the Board of Trustees, for what you do and what you offer them. And we bring it to the forefront. We also offer, HSA Authority is our HSA provider. That is partnered with Old National Bank, a local bank right here in our own backyard. This allows our employees access to go directly to the bank and reimburse themselves as opposed to waiting multiple days. For the qualifying full-time employees, we have three different health plans. A traditional PPO plan, a high deductible health plan number one, and a high deductible health plan number two. We have over a thousand employees divided amongst those plans. We have dental insurance by HRI, over fourteen hundred involved in that. Vision, over eleven hundred. And we also are very gracious to the board for the health savings contribution. This helps with the spend of medical expenses. Also, in my office, we administer and manage the 401A and 403B retirement savings plans. Those plans are managed through the principal group for the 401A side, which would be corporation dollars. And the 403B employee dollars put into retirement savings, the employees have an option. If that is going to be with the principal group or AIG valid. We also administer retirees for early retirees that counts for about a hundred and fifty-nine people who have taken advantage of early retirement. And will maintain on our benefit plan until Medicare eligible or age sixty-five, whichever may come first. We are in year number eleven of the Vigo County School Corporation Health and Wellness Center. If you do not know about our Health and Wellness Center, if you have not been there, I strongly encourage you, members of the board, to please contact my office. We will be happy to schedule an appointment for you to go and take a look. We are very proud of what we offer our employees. It is currently managed by Proactive MD. This was an acquisition that took place in two thousand and nineteen with what was formerly known as Wellness for Life. And what it does is clinic access for medical participants. If you are currently enrolled in our health plan, you have access to the clinic. There is no cost for our employees. And we also have, we've started in two thousand and eighteen at the end of the year, direct primary care membership for employee groups who may not have access. I feel like it is very important that you know that that product was a result of those conversations that Mr. Cox described, sitting down with employee groups and just listening to what their needs are. We had several members say that they would like to feel the value of being an employee of the Vigo County School Corporation, and they would like to have access to payroll deduction so they can have clinic access, and they pay for that service on their own. And it was heard, and it has been successful. It's been a very successful program for them. The average number of appointments is five hundred and seventy-six per month. Patient satisfaction is ninety-eight, is ninety-eight and a half percent. And we are seeing utilization of over a hundred and twenty percent, which benchmark is eighty-six. So we are well succeeding, passing that. The physician's assistant who oversees the day-to-day operations is Ken Massey, and he's making room for all employees, both on acute care and chronic care basis. Basic care such as physical dermatology visits. And he does minor, like, or review, things of that nature are done in the office, as well as lab corps provides lab testing. Again, no cost to the employee, which is saving money to our group's spend. Also, generic medicine prescriptions are dispensed at no cost to the employee, often in ninety-day increments. And in November of two thousand and nineteen, we added the addition of integrated mechanical care. This reduced the cost of the muscular skeletal spend for our group. And in two thousand and twenty, we got our first numbers back. I believe we saw a thirty-seven percent reduction in muscular skeletal spend. And that is overseen by Dr. Andrew O'Bannon locally, and he is also at the clinic. Are there any questions?
I don't understand what that means. What are you talking about specifically?
Okay, so the muscular skeletal spend is anything that pertains to the skeletal makeup of your body.
So like a broken bone?
No, ma'am.
Physical therapy. Physical therapy. Okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
So it is a different method than just the traditional physical therapy of come in and stretch with a ball. It is utilizing the McKenzie Method of physical therapy, which is pretty much using the reverse of what you're doing. It's causing pain to relieve that pain. A lot of things are being done in offices as I walk by throughout the day. I will see my secretary on her lunch break on a yoga mat doing her stretches that she was ordered to do, so it's working. Any additional questions? Thank you for your time.
One other item that is not on there would be our insurance committee meets each month. And these numbers that are on this particular sheet is shared with each one of those individuals each month. This month, we are actually moving back to having in-person meetings and also training. So we have some new individuals coming into the insurance committee that looks at all the different items that Proactive MD and Anthem and all of our groups provide to us and make decisions for the next year. So that's important to recognize. I mean, the last item is basically the goals for our HR department and management. Some of these are ongoing. Some of them we have, will have completed at the end of the year with. The first one, and I can actually see this work better than actually on paper, because it's further away, is review our software. And that software not only is just with this HR department, but that's also with payroll. Payroll and HR are intertwined. So therefore, our programs we need to look at are, we need to be able to talk to one another. So as we put stuff in on the HR side, it goes to payroll. AS400 does that right now. We're still there. We'd like to maybe look at something different. And we'll continue looking at that particular software program. Second, we'll establish a system evaluation, so by the end of the year, we will have that completed. Recruit highly qualified and diverse staff, that is ongoing. And we need to continue focusing on that as we get out of COVID, be able to visit. That's what our next focus is. And if you're going to fund this, we'll be part of that. He's already been able to help out with real building, working groups that man with us. The professional development resources, we're continuing with that, ASBO. Ms. Harris and I are still continuing with that and bringing back to our groups some staff development. So that will be ongoing. And then development of Internet, BCSC, with Mr. Riley's development of website. That is possible. They're able to do now. Intergrade anything on the HR website that you like. So our staff, our evaluations will be put on there, our payroll deductions and so forth. Do you have any more questions?
Yes, I'll ask. I always have a question. So I've had some folks reach out to me, just non-teaching staff, wondering about as the elementary schools are transitioning, what happens to those janitorial positions, those folks like that? Is there any kind of change in benefits? Is there anything going to affect their retirement, anything like that? I'd just like for you to just kind of broad strokes address that, so folks can hear your answer.
With our groups that we have met with, those individuals have landed in other elementary, some in middle school positions. Like custodians, as you mentioned, we did have some individuals in the elementary. Some have a little next year move to, should recruit consolidated, so forth. Those positions that were at Deming and or some custodian state, they will not lose benefits. They will not lose your experience, they're still in cooperation. Now, if you open one building to the other, is it possible to turn a person within that building? Yes, but the overall years of service never go away.
Thank you. May I have a question? Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Harris, thank you so much. Well done.
As Matthew transitioned, if it's okay. Madam President, I'd like to speak to Section six thousand of the Neola Policy Handbook.
Alrighty.
Let's take Section six, section six thousand has been made available now to all board members. So I would ask that you please continue to look at Section six thousand. Some things that we noted at our first policy meeting. One in relationship to cash, change, fund, and petty cash. We're going to combine those into one policy after talking to our Neola rep. When it comes to grant reporting, we're going to establish a grant reporting page on our website. So you can see our federal grants, our state grants, and then our local grants, and be able to track those. We had a question in regard to extracurricular funds. And are they different than booster club funds? In our policy, we say that we audit our extracurricular funds. Booster club funds are outside of the purview of the school district. They are their own separate accounts. We did look at the bid process, and we'll be recommending that two board members appear at bid openings when it is possible. Just for greater transparency. We had a question about short-term indebtedness that stumped us all in relationship to commercial paper. We found out the commercial paper was actually a promissory note, and we have not taken advantage of those for short terms. And I believe, and finally crowdfunding. We will be allowing crowdfunding, but we will be putting some guidelines and some restrictions around that so that we are all informed when a teacher or a building or a program might be engaged in crowdfunding. So those were the issues that we talked about. Again, if you have issues, please let us know. We will come back in two weeks and not only talk about the first two sections, but also Section six thousand.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. McLendon, on the Diversity, Civility, and International Exchange Program.
Thank you, Vic. Good evening.
Yes.
So good evening, President Lauer, Superintendent Hayworth, and members of the board. Did I get that right?
Yes, you did.
I'm trying to make sure I mess it up. I'll probably, there's a lot of name over mixed up. But good evening, I'm glad you're all happy today. We're talking about the Diversity, Civility, and International Exchange Program. Get in, please, just interrupt me if I'm not loud enough. So when it comes to the staff, it is me, myself, and I, so this is it. So with beginning this position, I met the community members and stakeholders. So whether that was IFC, you know, public, of course, Public Health, people from ISU, different religious groups, community members. And honestly, I was just trying to figure out how they felt about the community, what my job looks like to them, and what I need to be doing in my job or role. And I'm still learning, especially names, so if I forget your name, I apologize. I just started, so. So that is how that is going to be when I first started. Also, the food pantry, I had assistance with Eric Beverly. He is with Change Hope, with Change Taylor, excuse me. And we did the food pantry or food handout at Deming Elementary with Mrs. Tanus, who was phenomenal, and her custodial staff with helping us put food in the boxes. What we did is we split it up. It was two hundred items of food, and it was three hundred, excuse me, items of food. We split it up between community members and BCSC families. We didn't let the families know through Vigo County Schools, we wanted to be surprised. We also, you know, want to, we didn't want people to feel left out because, you know, maybe they signed up and didn't get it. We want to continue to do that quarterly throughout the year. You know, Eric and I talked, and people are not just hungry during the holiday seasons. So that's something we want to continue to do. In addition to that, the Catholic Charities gave us a huge amount of food. So food was just distributed to fourteen schools to either start or add on to their food pantry as well. And again, when it comes to those food pantries in those school neighborhoods, I want to contact and help the schools with the community partners, whether it be Kroger's, Myers, or Wells, to maybe to get food there again quarterly to help with the food pantry once again throughout the year. When it comes to student-led diversity committees, I actually finally got to meet with West Vigo High School last week. It's been a long time coming, especially with the two-hour delays on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But I've also been meeting with North High School and South. These conversations have been phenomenal. I'm really big on conversations. I just want to hear what the students have to say. I firmly believe that students aren't listened to enough. You know, teachers talk to them, the parents talk to them, and sometimes I wonder if people are listening to what they have to say. Conversations have been great. I take some of the conversations to the principals so they can feel safe with telling me without a name attached to their comment. With those comments, I want to try to find a middle ground with the principal. And it's a policy situation, and bring it to Dr. Hayworth and see about fixing the policy pertaining to the situations that come up in these meetings. With these student-led events, then it goes to teacher leaders. As a working title, I did talk to Dr. Forrest, who I'll be speaking about momentarily, or the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advocate. So with this, this would be more so, they'll be trained by Dr. Forrest, which I will talk about, to feel comfortable with leading conversations pertaining to diversity, equity, and inclusion, or advocacy, either or. It could be a broad scope of things when it comes to teachers or students. The reason for that is sometimes I've talked to the students and I ask them, who is that teacher that you, you know, you can go to and speak to? And sometimes they don't have that person. So I want this person to lead that charge and to have people feel comfortable with talking about, you know, issues they may not feel comfortable talking about with their superior, whether that be the principal, the dean, or whoever. Any questions? I'm sorry. So we have formed a Diversity Planning Committee. As you can see, the members on there right now are very diverse, and we can, of course, get more diverse. But I wanted to start off with a moderate number and not have too many people on the committee. During this committee, we talk about different topics pertaining to Vigo County Schools and how we can excel in the field of diversity and inclusion. We also talked about the textbook evaluation tool. We talked with more specific inclusion criteria. So Dr. Golder and Holly Pease are already doing a phenomenal job. But we want to help with talking about using the verdict. So we said, for example, we said he or she. So we took that out and just put they. But, you know, I brought that to the committee because I can't see everything, I don't know all, and I'm always open to suggestions. And I think they did a phenomenal job with helping Dr. Golder and Holly Pease with the textbook evaluation tool. In addition to our conversations, again, I'm not from here, so they assist me all the time with different information and different people I've talked to to help me, you know, more specifically, you know, Dr. Shees and Dr. Coleman, who I'll talk about later on in the presentation, especially assisting me with the International Exchange Program. So this is our speaker or our professional development on implicit bias, but more specifically bias in general. Dr. Forrest, we're talking about the ten different biases. Dr. Hayworth and I have had many conversations with Dr. Forrest, and I'll speak for myself now, Dr. Hayworth, but I feel very comfortable that she is very, she is very well equipped to have these trainings. So these trainings will be for, it'll start with school board, the administration, and then we'll do counselors, and then eventually teachers. And I'll talk about that later on, but thank you to BCTA with the conversation that we had to better help and assist the teachers when it comes to having a training. I know it's a difficult time, but I definitely feel like this is an important training that everyone should be taking. So also with Dr. Forrest, one thing that I really pointed out to her that she completely agreed was already worked with. When it comes to trainings, is I did hone in on, you know, no finger pointing. You know, I definitely champion teachers. I think a lot is on their plate, that's what I call the song, is teachers. A lot is on their plate when it comes to, so if I get trained in this section, do I have to then become an expert when talking to a student or a parent or another teacher or colleague? And I wanted to stress to her that we just want to equip them with the tools to help them. to help them pretty often in situations that may not have been as knowledgeable before in the past. And she is fully on board, and I'm excited. I can't wait for that to happen.
Do you have a tentative timeline for Dr. Flores?
Well, that was going to be my next question for you as well, when it comes to the calendar date that works for you all, or at least the majority. So we can talk about that now or at the end of the presentation now. Is that...
Go ahead.
So this is just a draft of the professional development that she had in store. So, right, tendersly, it's about 2 hours and 15 minutes, but she says she wanted it to be three, just so there's no time rushing. After speaking with BCTA, it will be altered for teachers. So, you know, I realize with students coming back, testing, grades, and just trying to get back to normalcy as much as possible, in addition to the other professional developments that they may have, we will be changing the professional development to videos for teachers. However, we would like the other professional developments to be virtually live for the other groups that'll be doing the professional development. So with the...I have a client survey that I sent out. I delayed sending it out in the first part of the year. I wanted to show sensitivity to teachers, parents, everyone in the whole corporation with dealing with COVID. So...but with that information, I do have the actual, you know, the comments and, of course, the charts and the graphs. If you would like that, I didn't, you know... It was 30 questions per survey, so I didn't want to just go through all the questions for you. So if you would like that or, you know, schedule a meeting with me to go in depth about the questions, please. I'm more than willing to roll through. So when it comes to administrators, we had 50 administrators throughout the survey. Counselors, we had 35. Deans, we had 17. And then high school students, I mean, high school teachers, excuse me, we had 209. And elementary and middle together, we had 604. So roughly 812 out of 1,043. So they did a phenomenal job, especially, again, during the time of COVID. I really appreciate you all giving me your feedback. I don't care what the viewpoint was, I just really appreciate you all are the rock stars, honestly. So recruitment, currently I'm collaborating with Mr. Cox. So we just recently spoke last week, as you talked about today as well, with the University of Louisville, which is where I'm from. So I'll be making some phone calls to try to increase the diversity with our recruitment, as well as Kentucky State. I have a lot of connections there as well, not more so than other universities. But in addition to that, I contacted City Year. City Year is a former service, a year of service. I got some good connections, but it always seemed to fall off. So I moved on to Teach for America. They are currently not doing that right now due to COVID. They don't want to start a new hub in Terre Haute due to COVID. However, AmeriCorps Vista, which is what I was in alumni of 2013, 2014, AmeriCorps Vista is a year of service. At the end of the year, you get a $5,500 Segal Award for school. So the plan is, or in a perfect world, they will come here to do AmeriCorps Vista. That position could be after-school programming, early learning, international exchange program with assisting me. It could be a multitude of jobs that are available. But the plan is for them to, of course, be here for a year and at the end get $5,500. Love the city. Do the second year when they will be enrolled in the graduate school program and/or the undergraduate program for another degree. And then they will do it a second year. So they'll be here for three years because in the first years, they don't get enrolled till the end. So three years, and hopefully they follow love and want to stay. With AmeriCorps Vista, it is a minimum of 10 applicants. So I look to start that in Fall '22, just to take our time. They...the application to turn in is usually March. So it'll be next March to turn the applications if you want to bring AmeriCorps Vista here. I'll be looking to get applicants, of course, from Terre Haute, but also from outside as well to diversify the applicants and the Vigo County Corporation as well. Then also with...also met with Dr. Coleman from ISU and Dr. Shees. I said that correctly, Dr. Harris? Awesome. So I met with them, and that's also a lead to talking with stakeholders and community members. And I just had a conversation about what our obstacles when it comes to retaining students or recruiting students. Mainly it was because they come to school and they go back to where they're from to teach. Also, a sense of belonging is lacking, so I'll try to assist with that. And they also gave me some great information about the classes to go to to recruit these students earlier on. So like an introduction to K-12 class, so that's LA 200 and CIM 200. So my goal for the fall is to go into these classes and recruit early and often. Tell them about how great Terre Haute is and Vigo County, how great it's been to me, and then how we'll leave for them if they stay. So in addition, I also asked them about specific classes when it comes to, you know, diversity and inclusion, topics of LGBTQ community. Because if some of these classes may have maybe a chapter or two weeks' worth of curriculum, I think that's something that Mr. Cox and I will have to look over when it comes to HR with employing these students, excuse me, these students and now teachers to help equip them with what they may have to communicate with students and teachers when they come to Vigo County Schools. Apologies, I changed wrong. Sorry. So for the International Exchange Program, Dr. Hayworth and I have been meeting with Dr. Park from ISU. First off, I want to say that we're looking, the earliest is for Fall '22 for the International Exchange Program. I just recently emailed Dr. Park a brochure of one of our high schools just to give him just a quick review of what we have here in Terre Haute. It's nothing set in stone yet. He will be sending it to the teacher, excuse me, to the parents in South Korea and Japan. We also have interest from Taiwan and...I'm sorry, what was it? In Kenya as well. So it's truly exciting. I really am hoping to get, again, the AmeriCorps Vista students to assist with this. I also have talked to St. Mary's of the Woods. I'll be meeting with them on Thursday about how housing will be provided for these students, hopefully. If not, we'll look at other avenues to house these students. And also...oh, I'm sorry. And also, if not any in the state, if that is possible as well. And if not, we'll have to look at other situations with the realtor and see if there's other avenues of housing. Dr. Hayworth, would you like to say anything additional with Kenya or anything?
No, not really. And then each board member would be a host for the...
So, and thank you for that. So speaking of a host, that'll be...
Funny you mention that.
Yeah. That'll be interesting to see. He was interested in hosting. Right now as well, the number we're looking at is 20 to 25. I'll be honest, talking to Dr. Park, it seems like we could definitely probably do 50, but we, you know, the first time...the first time we want to...yeah. We want to keep it low, so.
He's enthusiastic.
But there's definitely a lot of interest, and hopefully we can get the foundation set very well, and then we can take on.
We have had a student exchange program that was pretty healthy. Independent from the school corporation, though.
Now, this would be under a different visa.
Right, okay.
For that program.
Okay.
Would allow them to pursue some co-secondary opportunities in the United States after the completion of their senior year. And it is a residency program where they would be housed in a residential hall and not with families.
All right. So...
So the two programs can cope with this.
Exactly. Two programs definitely can cope with this because they have two different functions for that student.
Right.
I thought that was the case.
So the board would not be open to be coached?
I was kidding.
And also, I emailed Dr...you have to help me out, Dr. Hayworth, this last name again. Oswald, sir?
Oswald.
Oswald. So he will be the new superintendent from Marlboro County in Bloomington, but he has the International Exchange Program in Kokomo right now. So the plan is to go and meet with him and Kokomo, look at how they have things equipped, and ask all the questions, we're talking over. And to continue to ask questions once we get closer to the start date for the International Exchange Program.
Exciting.
It is, it is. And I'll also be going over there, at least I'll tell that, we'll see, to talk to parents and just explain to them what we have, and once again, how great Terre Haute is and what it would look like. Because I know parents, I can only imagine sending their child across, you know, the country or the world, excuse me, just answer all those questions with quick in that.
How long is the program? Like, the students would be here, how long would that be?
One year.
School year.
Senior year.
Matt, have you considered with the Diversity Planning Committee, calling it the Diversity, Civility Committee?
I'm open to any change. I...that's what I'm going to do.
I'm going to do one for civility and inclusion, but I mean...
Overall.
I think if you add diversity and inclusion, it covers everything.
Thank you.
And also, we were talking earlier about a recruitment, I mean, about the brochure. I think a video would be awesome to highlight our school corporation to send to other countries.
It's on YouTube as well. I'm so successful.
Was that Dr. Harris?
Just have it on YouTube, so it's accessible.
Yes. Agreed.
It was.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I'm going to have to leave a little early. Well, thanks for being here. And you know, we're all thinking about you and this heavy responsibility you've got, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Keep at it. Thank you. Dr. Hayworth, can you recommend a calendar of events?
I'm going to recommend stuff, but maybe five, nine, ten, right?
Okay. Well, I had a couple of questions, so if you've got...there's a pause, and these are not about anything that we've covered so far. But I have a question from a parent about book fees. Since the kids are all online, why do we still pay book fees? So Dr. Goler can respond to that.
Certainly. Right now, all of our print materials that traditionally we think of as print materials are also available digitally. And so when you think about what that digital platform has that the parents are paying for, along with many times a consumable workbook type of a product, they have the textbook online, they have... So if I choose to use those. One of the features that I think is the coolest is the embedded audio. So if you're a parent, it's been a long, long day. You can just turn on that audio at night and have that story read to your child five or six times. But it's really a cool feature so that kids can hear fluent readers, and that's a part of the digital package as well. Plus, there are interactive games that are online that the students have access to and research products. So by paying that $9 fee, a student receives access to a wealth of materials for that $9. And that's what the textbook fee goes for. Many vendors are now calling it curriculum materials instead of textbook materials because the textbook in many instances is not part of that. So we're looking at right now with social studies, multiple products, digital products, as well as digital products plus a consumable, but not so much textbooks.
Thank you. That was just...needed some clarification for the parents, and it was a good question. Thanks.
Good evening, board. Our section, we're going to cover these three topics. High school concepts, USDA and co-design with community partners. First, I want to say that when we're talking about construction projects, that is a different pot of money than how we fund teachers. So if we're going to build buildings, that comes out of either a capital projects fund, which is local property taxes, or comes through a referendum or a petition remonstrance process. So those are two different pools of money. I think it's always important when we're out and when we're doing these community meetings, just to remind folks, because we all know our struggles with compensation for our teachers. And we want to make it clear that we're not trying to build buildings and then shortchanging our teachers in regards to compensation. It is my hope, it was really kind of my hope this time last year, and things kind of got sidelined. It is my hope that we will begin a community process to start talking about eight different high school concepts. Concepts that range from a little renovation in the three high schools to concepts that actually speak to four brand-new high schools for Vigo County, and really everything in between. My thought process is that conversation will probably lead us to a concept that we do not even have available yet. In other words, we'll begin to look at things and say, we like this, or we like that, we want some more of this. And so what we're going to do, we'll start out with our teachers in those three high schools. And we're going to talk about the concepts in general. What we will not be talking about are science labs or music space or auditorium space. Really just looking at the shell of the building in which those great programs will be in. As we're talking to our high school staff about those, we will also be going out with eight community meetings that will be happening in April in our elementary schools. You might say, well, Rob, why host in the elementary school? Well, think of that fourth grader or that fifth grader. If we are to move forward with this process and if we get to a newly renovated or a new constructed school, they will be some of the first students to walk into that building. So we'll make sure we communicate to our teachers. We'll make sure that we communicate to our community in those elementary schools. We're also going to try to do something just a little bit different. Kind of Facebook-like, kind of texting-like, where we will be putting out questions which our community can respond to. Now, these will be questions dealing with our eight concepts. These will not be questions in relationship to you do not like the ice cream being served at the cafeterias. In fact, I don't think we're serving ice cream, so that may be a request. So we're going to kind of keep those on track, and you will be able to give us the idea. If you like that concept, if you don't like that concept. But trying to get where our parents and our community live in social media. That will be new for us to try to do that, but we have seen some districts use it to great success. We will also be conducting a parent-community survey in May. Parent survey probably coming through us, using another vendor for the community survey. And then we'll do what we historically have done. Dr. Goler and I, I think, talked about over the first two and a half years, we did over 90 community meetings. And most of those were in that bottom category. We would go meet with businesses, civic organizations, non-for-profits. I can remember doing one at Union Hospital, one at Regional Hospital. So that we get comfortable enough as a community to take those eight and then narrow them to three. When we narrow them to three, we really start to sharpen what we think those buildings are going to cost us. Now, we will have, for those eight, a rough idea. But that's what it will be, a rough idea. When we reduce that to three, we will put a little more dollars behind that with our architect to be able to figure out what are we really looking at? What are we really talking about in terms of cost? We'll take those three, kind of go out and do the same... We'll take those three, kind of go out and do the same thing. This time, we'll be at the football games, hopefully, depending upon where COVID is. We'll be at the basketball games, we'll be at the volleyball games, we'll be at uh, Special Persons Day at the elementary, trying to get that same type of input during the fall of the year, in terms of what is our community like? In regards to those three, turn it into one. And if there is a project to be had, and if our economy is in a position. We would ask the board for permission to place something on the May ballot, primary ballot, for a high school project in May of twenty twenty-two. No, it's twenty-one, I'm sorry. No, May of twenty twenty-two. That should be January of twenty twenty-two. It's not a welcome secret, but maybe you haven't heard, I'm working with the USDA to talk about potential funding for a project in West Vigo. You might say, well, Rob, why not? And, Terre Haute. Well, the USDA has a program that applies to the rural nature of West Vigo. And so we've been talking to them about a potential renovation or construction project for West Vigo. And there are some advantages in working with the USDA, a lot more paperwork that needs to be completed, but there are some advantages, and those advantages are in the term and the rate. In a traditionally financed school project, a, a construction project that is just for, uh, let's say, building a new high school, traditionally, that's about a twenty-year term. If you think about your house, your home, many people will buy that on a thirty-year term. What the USDA allows you to do is think anywhere between twenty and forty years. At a fixed rate. If approved by the state, if approved by, at the national level, it then comes back here for the order approval, and what I would believe is a project that is for West Vigo, Terre Haute North, Terre Haute South, and whatever that looks like. Take a look at this slide, this was put together by Baker Tilly for us, for some comparison. So the thought process here is, we, we, we're looking at a ten million dollar project. Here is traditional financing and what that would cost. Here is USDA financing and what that would cost. And so let's say you had a hundred million dollar project. Look at the difference. Ten cents versus eighteen point five cents. In terms of the impact on the tax rate. But also look at the difference here. Twenty-year term. Estimated interest, you're gonna see a huge difference. We know that, don't we, in our own finances, in our, in our own homes? Max payment annually? And impact. Here, looking at an average home in Vigo County, that is the average, and what the impact of that would be, and again, that's fixed on just a ten million multiplier. So we want to bring that to our community and see they have an interest in that. Last thing I would like to talk about is co-design. Co-design is a philosophy that I believe you're starting to see all across the country when it deals with government agencies, institutions of higher learning, school corporations, non-for-profits, and business. And we're all trying to figure out how we can bring greater, greater value to our communities to attract and retain people, families, and businesses. I've had the good fortune of doing some co-design projects in my career. Let's talk about a project with USDA for a West Vigo project. Who might we go to, to look to co-design? Well, we might go to local government or state government. Is it, is there a need there? Is there an interest there? Maybe it's something we do not know about. Maybe it's a water issue in, in West Terre Haute. We'd go to local businesses, same thing. Health department, same thing. Might we go to St. Mary's? And think about co-design. Maybe a lab school concept between St. Mary's and our district. I'm gonna show you two examples. These were sent to me by a local patron here in Vigo County. I had already seen them, because after I turned fifty, I started to get my ARP magazine as well, and that's where these two examples come from, because they deal with senior living, being co-designed with high school projects. So you can take a moment, just read those first two, uh, this, this project. Looking for cradle-to-grave space. Came to their community. Developed conceptual designs. Had a community group looking at that project. And in twenty sixteen, they were successful. Here's what they say about the project. The Emeryville Center of Community Life has been called an urban version of the old town square, a place where all members of the community, regardless of age or economic background, come together for social, educational, or recreational activities. Young, young children and spirited teens give a positive energy to the contemporary center that houses the city's elementary school, intermediate school, and high school in separate buildings. Another building contains the city's community service offices, the school district offices, a lifelong medical center, and a dental clinic. The clinics enable students to stay on campus instead of leaving for health appointments. That's a co-design project within that community. Here's another one. Notice that was on the west coast, this one's on the east coast. Again, because it came out of the ARP catalog, you can see it's senior in nature, doesn't have to be senior in nature, but it's an example of co-design. Here, this community, it's not a referendum state, because they took two proposals to bid, one just the high school, and one the high school with the community center. And there's that successful project. I think I thought about, I like the capture of the uh, school sign out front, probably not too many in the country you could find high school and senior center, a senior center. Here's what was said about the uh, Swamp Scott Senior Center. It features a living room with a fireplace, and three activity rooms or classrooms that are busy from eight AM to four thirty PM. The center can accommodate ninety for lunch, there's a health clinic and administrative offices, many senior center members participate in a Friday tap class in the high school's dance studio. The students and the seniors occasionally interact, such as when World War II or Korean War vets visit high school history classes to share their experiences. See, I love this one. Seniors, students help the seniors with their cellphones, computers, and tablets. Student athletes sometimes talk sports with their senior center's men's club, students have to come by to learn to knit or cook, and senior center members are provided free tickets to school performances. We're talking about our eight concepts, I'm going to be talking about the opportunity for co-design. Here's some other examples of co-design.
In California, they had to have a legislative change.
They did, they had to change the law.
Do we know what their, would that, would we have to do that also?
I think if you were looking at a mix of our funds with somebody else's funds, yes, I think that would have to require a change. Here's other examples. The first one from uh, Toledo was a Boys and Girls Club that Toledo was building into each one of their elementary schools. If you'll remember, we talked about this, this time last year, and I'm getting ready to jumpstart that conversation again with the Boys and Girls Club at Meadows Elementary. Kokomo, just down the road, we heard a little bit about Kokomo and their international school, their baseball complex is shared by uh, IU Kokomo, a local minor league team, and the high school. The uh, Pillar School Corporation and a uh, a uh, telecommunications business went together to build that community auditorium. Marion University, just outside of Indianapolis, and Ritter Football. Many examples around the country, playgrounds, gymnasiums, pools. Uh, you are now starting to see private-public partnerships for childcare centers, and a few educators villages are popping up, and I would like for one to pop up in our community. Our vocational trades class is on its last space in its current area. So they're going to need to relocate that to another area, and I would propose that we look at Meadows Elementary School property for a teacher's village, or an educator's village. When I talk to contractors, when I talk to realtors, there's not many two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand starter homes being built in our community. I think it speaks to the profit margin that those contractors can find there. What we would be interested in is just not our construction trades, because if you build forty houses the way we do it, that's forty years, that's not much of a village that's being done. But again, we would look to co-design with local universities, local businesses, to try to bring affordable housing, whether that's homeownership, whether that's a rental, and our opportunities that uh, that we might even not be able to think of right now for this educator's village. I say all of this, and hopefully we can get this launched and this discussion going about our facilities. I think, Jackie, it's been a discussion item in this community for how long now?
Oh, like, twenty years, fifty years.
So. So, it's my hope, again, if the economy will allow us, to have this discussion and put a question out in front of our voters. But we face some challenges. We face the challenge of declining enrollment because our population is shrinking. We face, we, we face the issue of multiple competitive options that our parents and their families have to choose from. When we take those two things and we look at our funding formula and where we will be as a district in the next few years, it's going to be hard for us to attract and retain staff. That's why I think we have to be innovative. Innovative in our school design. And so, we need to attack those challenges, thinking of it as always analyzing the business aspect of what we do. And we need to continue to focus finances in such a way that we retain and attract staff, families, and businesses. We need to be innovative, because there's a lot of competitive markets out there for us, that we are competing against. We need to build relationships. We're looking at these facilities, co-design does not work if there's no one else there out there wanting to do co-design with you. And finally, if we're going to meet these challenges, teachers, staff, parents, students, the business community, and the community at large must be assured of their voice at the table, their voices at the table being heard, and their safety in this process. I think that we would be able to move forward with a facilities project if we could do those things. What questions do you have for me?
Just lots of, well, as you say, lots of challenges with the innovation, and I think, I do think we have to step out of our comfort zone, or our traditional comfort zone, and, and um, and step forward and try some new things, or investigate new things and, and see what the possibilities are. I think we've got a lot of support in the community to uh, to do some innovative things, so.
I have a question. Um, back to the USDA loan situation, so is that, would that be presented in, it would have to be voted on by the public in order to get final approval in referendum style? Would it be separate from any other things that we'd be asking for?
So, uh, what would happen? We would actually get approval to spin at the, from the national level for the dollar amount this large. However, even though it's a forty-year term, it would still be subject to the petition, or excuse me, would still be subject to the referendum process. So even though the, the national government said, here is the money, it would still be subject to the referendum process.
So would it be separate then from, and would it, would there be two referendums? That's my question.
So, I believe that there would end up being two questions. One for whatever happens in Terre Haute, and one that would happen for West Vigo. Don't know that for certain, I just know in, in past uh, referendums that I've been involved in, the description of the question is always an issue. And so I think it would be very difficult to explain in one question, those two issues. What I would say, jumping way, way ahead, is that for the board, my recommendation would be, if one fails and one passes, they all fail. If it's a two-question. That we take it together as a community, not leaving anybody behind in a facilities project.
So honoring the, the safety that you have in the last phrase, um, have you already started identifying community organizational champions who are eager to be part of the process and journey?
Yeah, we have. I've been really pleased with the relationships that we've been able to develop with our end, uh, whether that's St. Mary's, Rhodes, Indiana State, Ivy Tech. Trying to figure out what other inroads into our businesses, I think, uh, in working with our chamber, we've always tried to keep them informed of ideas, thoughts that we would like to move forward. We want to re-engage the business roundtables, the faith-based roundtables, the nonprofit roundtables that we were doing, and then we're. roundtables that we were doing and then were canceled because of COVID. And, you know, once you start speaking of co-design, then it's helpful, then your hope is people start coming to you as well. And I'll just use a great example, Twelve Points, and some of the things that are happening at Twelve Points, we've been asked to do a small project for Twelve Points. Anything else?
Have you given any thought to the way the state is crafting its long-term workforce development, career path plans? Because in the gigantic statewide strategy, there's a lot of this, please co-locate, put this stuff next to high schools, put it, you know, is that part of your calculus?
Yes, very much so. Let's just think of not just our higher ed, but the number of training centers that are located in Vigo County. And if we're thinking about career pathways, and there's already a location there that does that type of training, would they, probably a liability issue that we'd have to get through, but would they allow us to have access to those training centers? We've also been involved in projects where we went right into, on the factory floor, and worked with interns and apprenticeships for that type of opportunity as well. So yeah, I think that's a huge part of all of it. I got one last thing, and I'm already going through the eight o'clock. Dr. Powers.
Not judging.
And that is, it was approached by a board member to have a discussion before we leave here tonight, just to think about what we're seeing IPS do, and that is, on April 6, IPS is bringing students back for five-day-a-week instruction. So be interested in your thoughts. I will just share a few here. One, we're just in our first week of high school, so we'd love to figure out what that looks like. And I'd also like to see what the situation is with our staff and how they are being vaccinated. I think that's important to our calculus and what's what we're thinking of, what our approach would be. Been interested to see if any other board members might have anything that they might want to add to that.
I'd also, last thing here, two messages have popped up about the expected spring break ramifications, and so I would actually either let other communities run that experiment and see how that goes in there, or whether we bid a week after that as well, just to make sure.
Any other thoughts?
Who's going to ask Dr. Valatavich to give us the numbers over the weekend?
Dr. Valatavich, go on down, give us the numbers.
So case count for Saturday was fourteen for the county. Case count for Sunday for the county was fourteen. Case count this morning for today, which it's always a day in the rags, I mean, was four.
So the numbers are good?
I did think I saw on the news that we have seen an increase in cases recently. I don't know if that was accurate, but that Indiana and Vigo County were seeing a slight bump, which that makes me nervous. I feel like we should not let off the gas on COVID. We'll take our foot off the gas because we're far from finished with it.
We just have to keep track of what the numbers are. So thanks, we'll do that.
I think that it's important to kind of keep that in our line of sight, though, because we talk all the time about our dwindling student population, and we know they're going to other districts that are offering that. And I think we just have to be honest about that and say that that has to remain part of what our ultimate goal is.
Yeah, I think just in internal conversations, you know, targeting when that would occur. We've been having those in the last week, just trying to think about it, but it's on our mind all the time. It's not, the day goes by still, but we do not talk about case numbers, what we should be doing.
All of our teachers can get the vaccine at Walmart, CVS, what's the third?
Meyer.
Meyer.
Walmart, Kroger, and Meyer.
Walmart, Kroger, and Meyer. So there's all.
There's a one of them available.
Available for all teachers.
Of course, that's going to take some time for all that to happen. Are we tracking that, Dr. Ewing? Could you let us know when all of our employees have been vaccinated?
I don't believe I can get that number, and I don't believe all of ours.
And you're not requiring.
Don't have. I'm vaccinated, I just don't think I can get that information out.
I was just curious because we oftentimes, and even on the news, they would say that the teachers, but is actually all school employees?
All right, board, thank you so much for your patience tonight. Covered a lot of ground. Thank you for presenting, you did a great job.
And the future meetings will be, there will be a business meeting Monday, March the 22nd, six to